Regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held March 7, 2017. Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Altous.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Howery.
Here.
Mayor Alinsky.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is Brief Summary of Current Events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Does the council have anything to share?
Real quick.
Sure.
Councilmember Henry and I attended the VIVIRIO Verde Valley Regional Economic Organization for the engage partner, to engage partnerships in the Verde Valley. That's what I got out of it. You can go ahead and let everybody know what you got out of it. It was a great meeting. A lot of people at the table. It was, it was very cool. And the Verde Valley Emergency Preparedness Fair was an enormous success. Thank you to everybody who participated and came and played and learned something new. And hopefully that's going to be something they can do every year, every other year. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Good. Any other council members?
I do.
Councilmember Altous?
So I served dinner at the American Legion Post 25 on Friday, February 21st, serving veterans. Bike night is this Friday night, March 10th, at Colts next door, right here next door at Colts. We've moved, starting at 5:00 PM. If anybody can make it out, you don't have to ride. Welcome Home Vietnam Vets, as Kyla mentioned last meeting, is April 1st. They are looking for volunteers, so I'd like to encourage City Council, if you can, it's a Saturday, to volunteer. You can let Kyla or myself know and we can let the committee know, but they're looking for people to help hand out the pins for the vets, serve the food line. Doug, you might have, Mr. Bartosch might have more things. I had to run out of the meeting today.
Yeah, I think those are the two main areas of volunteers, but there was also, you know, like you said, the food, handing out the food, you know, just helping with setup, breakdown, those kind of things.
Right, set, yeah, setup and breakdown, not two, two other big things. Some of us that will be riding in the Welcome Home Parade won't be able to help with, with setup because we'll be in the, in the motorcycle parade. So if you can help, you could, like I said, let Kyla or myself or, or Mr. Bartosch know and we'll get that information. I encourage the public as well, if, if you can, if you can help, it's a, it's a big honor to be a part of, of this, to welcome home our Vietnam vets. And then finally, and I'll bring this up again, but Thursday, April 13th, Annie's is holding a spaghetti dinner. All proceeds will be benefiting, benefiting the Verde Valley Military Service Park, so they're donating the food and their time, kind of like Brandy's did a couple of years ago for Sergeant Maynard when we built his home. So, so again, Thursday, April 13th, Verde Valley Military Service Park spaghetti dinner at Annie's from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. So I ask you all to please mark your calendars. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council members? City Manager, have you got anything to report?
Just a couple of things, in case you needed an extra incentive to get over and visit the recreation center. This last Sunday, we changed out all the cardio equipment with new equipment. And so we will have hopefully less out of order signs over there. The Police Department is working with Cable One to do some public service announcements for Cottonwood Cares, which is our charitable program to help the homeless. And so those will be broadcast on local cable channels. And then this week, we'll finally be opening our new restrooms, the one at Garrison Park, the one at the Kids Park, and the remodeled restroom at the softball fields. And we've had a little bit of problem with vandalism, so I'd certainly ask the public to help us, you know, if they see anything, to make sure they call and report it so we can look into it. It's kind of unfortunate to build something so nice and put a lot of the public's money into it only to have it destroyed by probably young people that are out there with not a lot to do. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Very good. We, moving on to presentations, we have an update from Yabapai College, Dr. Ron Liss, Vice President for Instruction and Student Development. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name in the beginning, so.
I'll introduce her to Dr. Connie Harris, who is our newest board member. And if you look on what I just handed out, she's in the center pictures on the right. She started in Jan, in January with the board, and she represents District Three, which includes Cottonwood, of course.
Very good.
She's here to answer questions if we have them at the end or for meeting, my moral support, I think, or moral support, okay.
Very good. Well, thanks for being here today. We appreciate your time.
Well, thank you. And I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me for a few minutes with this, but I also want to make sure it's interactive, so if you have questions about the college, I'm here to answer those as well. But we're pretty excited about a lot of things that are going on. But I just quickly go through what I gave you, so I know, I noticed a number of you paging through, but it's kind of wrapped together in several brochures. The top one, it says Spring 2017 Update is the most current information that we have. And then we always do, and this is brand new off the press just this week, is our kind of report on the 2016. So this is what we've done in the last year. This is what's really current on going on. And then you do have in here, there's the strategic, really what our strategic goals and activities are. So that's, those are paperwork for you to take, take with you. And some of you have one other piece there. I somehow ran short on one of them, and I don't have the last brochure, but it's a smaller one about this big in the middle of it yet. That's the one that says Life Explored on it. And, and a lot of those have data and some figures about how it does as a whole. And of course, here in Cottonwood, you want to know, well, what has it done for us and where are we with it? But I like to talk about, you know, kind of the regional pieces and what we've done or what we're doing around. I just heard a report back today, for instance, in the Sedona area, and I know it's not in Cottonwood, but it's not too far to travel. We're renovating our space up there quite significantly, and we'll be starting a culinary program there in the fall, along with the hospitality, continuing our OSHA lifelong learning activities there as well. So I think that's, that's great. What, what kind of is past the spring, because it happened last summer, if you go onto our Clarkdale campus, you'll find the pavilion up there is renovated quite extensively with a nice floor on it. And so if you come to our graduation in the spring, which I invite you to in May, you have a nice, nicer surface to sit on. And especially for the women in heels, they don't have to bury their heels in the chips of whatever it was on there and destroy them. So that's there. So, so we are doing quite a bit of construction work. You know, there is some traveling to get to it, but our Prescott Valley Center, which again is a hop, skip, and a jump, and a couple more hops and a skip when you get there. And we're moving our allied health programs there, so it'll be a little bit closer than going all the way into our Prescott campus. And we're pretty excited, the Mountain Institute, JTED, is moving their programs into the building with us. Which leads me to the, I don't know what you call it here, I hear it both ways, either VACTD or VIACT, which do you use?
I say VIACT, but everybody says it different.
You choose it one way or the other, I don't know. So VIACT. So our partnerships with VIACT have been going strong and, and, and building in a lot of positive ways. And we're looking at, in particular, of working with them as soon as this fall and putting some allied health programs together so that there can be the dual, the, it's actually not dual, it's the JTED programs running college coursework. So the students would get college courses or college credit as they're taking their high school credits, but using actually college faculty to deliver the courses. And we'll be doing it. We're not sure exactly what yet because we're trying to work it all out, but it looks like medical assisting is a possibility, probably not this year, but next year. But phlebotomy, I, I think we will have off the ground and running for this coming fall semester. That's what I've heard again this week. So that's, that's pretty recent things. We're pretty excited about one of the things we're doing. I'm working a lot with the high schools in bringing programs that match up the high school to the college in a variety of ways. One of the programs we're really excited about, we've run it, we're now going to be running it for the third time this summer, which is our LEAD Program, which works with students in the high school after they've graduated and before they go on to whatever they're doing in their lives, we try and attract some students that know, that they know that they're not college material. They come to us and everyone says, I'm not college material, I can't do it. And those are the ones we're after because they are. You know, we, we know that about our kids. They're, they're college material whether they know it or not. So we get them in the summer and we offer them two college level courses. It's free. So, so they get that. And the really neat part of it is watching them at the end, because at the end of the summer, they're like, well, how do I sign up for all my courses? And they come in and, and, and this past summer, it was all Verde Valley that was the only place we didn't run in Prescott. We didn't get the enrollment there, which is kind of backwards to normal. Usually we get plenty of enrollment in Prescott, but this time it was Verde, which we were happy to see. And we encourage you to talk that up in the community. I've talked it up with the superintendents and we'll continue to do that because it's very important. We only will take in 15 students, so it's not a huge group, but it allows them to really get invested. And, and we're looking at it, that we, we had it on a, a two-year pilot program that ended last year. So we weren't, well, actually it's a three-year. It was going to run this summer and then we were going to stop it. And it's been so successful that we've now incorporated it into our budget. We'll be running that continuously now from this point on because it, it works for the students. It turns them from non-college-going to college-going and then being successful. I was at a scholarship luncheon on Saturday and one of the speakers was talking about how, where she got to and what she was doing and what her plans were. And if I remember right, she was going to end up being a doctor. That's her goal. And she had, was just graduating from the college, she'll graduate this May, and it just had tears running down my eyes as soon as the story and what the change it made from what she thought she could do to what she was able to do. So I'm real excited about that. So, and again, we will be having 15 slots. And what's interesting is in Prescott, we run it as a, we use our residence halls. And we have each summer have had people from the Verde come over to Prescott, live there for the summer, and participate on the college campus, and that's been positive too. And, and the good thing is they come back to Verde. They don't stay over in Prescott. Which is what we really, what my emphasis is all the time, is what can we do in each community to make sure that we're helping those students move forward in a positive way, get a great education, and be ready to stay in the community and contribute to it? Because if we're training people to leave, it, it really isn't, we don't have the right program. So that's one of the things that I really like to talk about. What are the right things for you to have here so to keep your kids here? So, so I think that's a critical point of, of what we do in our programs. So I talked about the two major building programs we're doing in Verde. The other thing we're doing is we just delayed a renovation on the Verde campus, waiting for VIACT to come together with some other things. And it was actually taking a building and renovating it to be a career and tech building. And rather than us go and build the career and tech building, thinking what needs to be here, we need the Verde to come together and say, this is the right career and tech things for here. And then when we renovate the building, we'll have a building that's usable for the community. And, and that's what, what I'm all about, is, is making sure that happens. So.
Which building is this, Dr. Liss?
It's Building L.
Okay.
Which right now has our allied health programs, our nursing programs in there and all, but it doesn't necessarily have to stay there.
You know, we can move those around campus. We actually have some, quite a bit of flexible space on the campus to move things around, but we want to make sure when we renovate, we do the right thing.
So that's really two years out now, because we, we need a, a year to plan, but we need kind of the community, and VIACT in particular, to come together in the next year. So then we can start planning based on, on where they're growing. It's not that we can't do anything until then, but we didn't want to start building a building that may not fit the purposes of, of the community.
So that won't help VIACT then for this year, because they just hired their, or they're hiring their construction tech?
It would not help them because we won't have a physi, well, it doesn't help them with new programs. We do have the allied health programs, so we'd probably use that facility if that's what they want. We don't even know for sure where we would be offering the programs that we would offer this year. Whether it's on a different site, whether it's in, even in one of the high schools would be a possibility. So, so we don't know. So again, another piece that we really, with our partnership with high schools that we're working on, and it talks about it on the front page of this, I know about the middle of the page, about where my thumb is, that we're really undergoing a big push for pathways. And pathways is really working from, and I look at it coming from the high school to the master's program or beyond. But how do we make sure that students get the cleanest path, that they know what they're doing, if they're part-time, full-time, half-time, whatever they're doing, that they understand what it takes to move through efficiently through the program, so they're not wasting time along the way? But also, once they're on a pathway, we then can build services around them to support them. And we keep an eye by building the pathway and knowing what they're on, if they start to veer off of that and start doing some things that are not well, we're going to have a tracking system in place so we can grab them early enough to make sure, are you doing what you, do you mean to be doing what you're doing? Because sometimes people will change their paths and that's okay. But if they don't mean to, but they're doing it unintentionally, we want to have services around them to, to make sure they stay on path. So it's pick the path, make sure you're on it, provide the support services around it that we can make sure that they're successful, because that's what it's all about. It's really moving from the historical higher education was get them in the door. And we were get paid for getting students in the door and, you know, and, and eventually they complete, but they hung around for 15 years. So we're still collecting tuition and all the other pieces, so what the heck, right? Well, that's not where we are anymore. We're trying to be efficient. We want to get them completing. We want to get them completing with what they want. And so we are really focusing on how do we get students in the door efficiently still. We don't want to exclude anybody. But once they get in there, how do we take a hold and make sure that they're moving forward, they're doing the things that are going to be best for them, and helping them go through? So that's what Pathways is really all about, and we're focused quite extensively on that. One of the sayings I'm bringing in, and I, I brought it and then I kind of dropped it, and it'll be coming back. I'm calling it student success, a name, not a number, because we, you know, everybody gets assigned a student number, and it depersonalizes in a lot of ways. So I want to repersonalize that and making sure we're taking care of each one of the students in the way that they need the care and, and make sure that's done. And then, of course, we, we will be continuously reviewing what we're doing. So if this isn't working, and we'll have tracking identification, says, is this working? Are we, are our benchmarks moving in a way we want? And if not, we go back and redo the program or change, you know, tweak it, I would hope, rather than redo it, and move it in ways that is going to efficiently get students through the program. So I, I, I don't need to carry on with a lot more of this. I'd rather have questions, if you have any, for, from the council board.
Counsel, any questions for Dr. Liss? I'm curious, if you'd tell me about this Pathways program a little bit more. Is this something you're offering over here too at the Clarkdale Campus?
It is actually, it's, Pathways isn't really a program by itself. It's a methodology of us running the college.
Okay.
So it really is, is offered across the college.
Okay.
So anywhere you go, there will be a pathway for every program we, we have, and it will be everywhere.
So, and, and that's critical to us. It's, and the other thing with Pathways that we're, I'm really emphasizing, it's not just the faculty in the classroom, it's not just the student advisors.
Any person that they run into on the campus, their primary goal is to help a student complete successfully through a program.
But you'll have all the support services in place at the Clarkdale Campus as well?
We will be kicking it off in the fall.
Okay.
And will everything be in place? No. It will be an evolving process to get it all going. It's a, it's a huge undertaking and change for us. And I've been pushing real hard, and I've, I only got here in June, and I, I kind of brought this with me as saying, you know, they were getting, kind of talking about it for a couple of years but weren't moving on it. And I said, we got to move, we got to get it in place. I want something in place by the fall.
Right.
It probably won't be 100% established for another year after that.
Okay.
But we are looking to add support services along the way, so, you know, that's, that's my focus on where I'm adding, adding dollars and, and budget and resources to that.
Good. It's certainly encouraging, at least for me, to hear that you're focusing a lot on, on career tech opportunities here. I can't stress how important that is to the Verde Valley. I met yesterday with Chairwoman Winnicky and the Vice Chair over at the Yabapai Apache Nation, and it's an issue they're wrangling with too, as a lot of communities are. And we, we're screaming for post-secondary career tech opportunities here, so anything you can do.
Gotcha.
To help in that front would really be appreciated.
You know, we have CTEC, which is a wonderful operation, and there's lots of things there, and what we hear is we'll just move something like it over here, but it may not be the right thing. It's, so that's where we're working, is making sure what we bring in here isn't just the kind of a rubber stamp, put it in there. We need to know what the community's doing, and that's going to take a little bit of time.
Well, I think, I think you'd find there's a lot of support here to, to get a program like that established.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Well, thank you, Dr. Liss. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for listening. If you have any questions, there's a number to call on here. You're welcome to contact me by name. I'm easy to find at, at Yabapai College, and I'm more than happy to come back or talk to individuals at any time about anything you need, you want to know about the college.
Would you mind, sir, just leaving your cards on the table so the council can grab them after the meeting?
We have a couple of them on.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for the discussion and/or action, for discussion and/or action. And comments are limited to a five-minute time period. So if there's anybody in the public that would like to address the council, and sir, I know that you, you're on for the Call to the Public, so we'll call you up here in just a second. But there should be yellow forms in the back if there's anyone else that would like to address the council. So I'll go ahead and call up then Eric Evans, please, Principal of American Heritage Academy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you? City Council? Thank you for having me here this evening. I do have some handouts, so if I could approach and pass those.
Sure.
We can hand them, yeah.
I know my, my time is short. I have a five-minute window here, so I will be as brief as I can. I have a PowerPoint here that we put together to help assist in what our concerns are. Again, my name is Mr. Evans, Principal of American Heritage Academy, Cottonwood Campus. I also had with me here this evening the CEO of Ed Key Incorporated, my boss, Mark Plitsowhite. Ed Key Incorporated manages close to 20 public charter schools throughout the state of Arizona, AHAs, both AHAs in the Verde Valley being two of them.
You said pub, public charter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So on the first slide here, you can see that the title of, and the reason that I'm here is student and pedestrian safety near our campus, specifically East Cherry Street and Main Street in Cottonwood. First, who are we? Who is American Heritage Academy? On page two, we are a 501(c)(3) public charter school located at the Dead End side, at the east side of Cherry Street here in Cottonwood. And we serve almost 300 students in grades K through 12. We do not provide transportation, so students must walk to and from school each day or get picked up. So there's a lot of car traffic on that Dead End street four days a week, 10 months out of the year, twice a day at drop-off between 7:15 and 8:00 in the morning. And again, it ratchets it up at 3:00 PM till about 3:45. And then we have a lot of pedestrian students on traffic, at all ages, on foot, who are navigating through that traffic, heading on their way home to as far as Village, or Verde Village out at the outskirts of town. So quite a significant walk for some of our students. The two main concerns that I have that I want to present to the city council this evening, at the bottom of page two, are the crosswalks at Main and Cherry. And then, secondly, the lack of sidewalks, lack of basic painted roadway lines on East Cherry, lack of adequate shoulders on the road, and a lack of proper roadway drainage on East Cherry as well. All that water wants to run down Cherry and into our parking lot, around our building, into our backfield, and eventually to that irrigation ditch that is behind our campus. The crosswalks at Main and Cherry Streets are five lanes of traffic to cross, two in each direction with a turning lane in the middle. It's a 35 mile per hour zone that is rarely obeyed. There's a lot of speeders through there, which is another safety concern. And there's heavy traffic in and out heading to Old Town. And you have lots of pedestrian traffic from our students, DES visitors, the Department of Economic Security, who are disadvantaged individuals who are usually navigating and getting there on foot. A city bus stop at the end of Main and Cherry, and then all the commercial businesses around the area, so lots of traffic. Morgan, Scott, and I agree that although we can't quite put our finger on the why, that these two crosswalks are hard to see for vehicles. I went and looked again today and spent some time at the intersection, and I noticed that it comes to a peak there, right at Main and Cherry, where both crosswalks are located. The other crosswalks, as you're heading towards Old Town, are on a downward hill, and they're very easily visible from a distance, so you can see the white lines across the road. Some potential options that, that we're hoping for, for better safety of our pedestrians, brighter and more reflective crosswalk paint. Mr. Scott indicated the possibility of pedestrian flashing beacons, perhaps a stop sign or a stop light, although that's quite the undertaking. Crosswalk signs, just as a note, are 10 yards and 30 yards away from the actual crosswalk. So it sneaks up on you as a car right away. There's not enough notice there for the two crosswalks. East Cherry Street itself, we believe that there is a lack of striped lines indicating lanes and shoulders of the road. Adequate sidewalks or shoulders for pedestrians to use. A lack of proper drainage for floodwaters, which is eroding away at the road. You'll see pictures momentarily. We believe there's a lack of student and pedestrian safety on Cherry Street, and emergency access to a quality roadway. There is a first responder that lives down the dirt road near our campus. They need access, 24-hour access to Cherry Street during emergencies here in the city. And we believe there's a lack of safe speeds as a 25 mile an hour zone on Dead End Cherry Street. Potential problems as a result of the lack of things that we see on Cherry Street, cars not maintaining their lane, cars swerving to avoid potholes and dips in the road, and students walking on private property and/or in the road, and my worst fear, pedestrian versus vehicle accidents and/or fatalities. I know my time is up. I heard the timer. Pages four through seven, four through six, excuse me, are titled for where they are being taken, and photos that I took to show you the crosswalks, show you the crosswalk signs, and more importantly, the, the potholes and the poor road quality of East Cherry Street. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Appreciate you coming in. As you know, we can't respond directly to, to this item, because it's not listed on the agenda, but we can direct staff to put it on the agenda. And I spoke with the city manager earlier today, I think, about, we do have a list of, of priority sidewalks. We don't have much money that we put into it every year. I think about $30,000 is what the council allocates every year for its sidewalks. But it's a concern all across town, so what I'd like this council to do, because it's a new council, is take a look at that list again and see if we want to reprioritize any of the sidewalks. Can't promise you anything, but I, I can promise you that we'll put it on the agenda soon for discussion with this council.
I know that I would certainly appreciate any priority that you could give to East Cherry Street and the intersection at Main and Cherry.
I understand. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. No other call? Members of the public out there want to speak to us? We'll move on to Approval of the Minutes, special meeting and regular meeting of February 7.
Okay. I, I have a few corrections, but I've talked to the city clerk about it, so I would go ahead and approve the minutes with corrections as noted.
They just type the graphical?
They're, they're not, they're not content. They're courtesy and courtesy and just simple, simple things like that.
Yeah, there was just some typos. I think I went over my notes with Ms. Allen, and I think she caught them all that I caught, so.
All right. And do I hear a motion?
Second. She made the motion.
Oh, you did make the motion. I already heard a motion. Councilmember Allen and Councilmember Pfeiffer, second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Minutes are approved. Okay. Item eight is Consent Agenda. There are just two items on the Consent Agenda. Number one, renewal of contract with Patriot Disposal for Solid Waste Removal Services for the City of Cottonwood. Item two, special event liquor license application submitted by Susan Beach, applicant for Verde Valley Birding and Nature Festival.
Sorry.
AKA Verde Valley Nature Organization for an event scheduled for April 27, 2017, at Dead Horse Ranch State Park, located at 675 Dead Horse Ranch Road. Any items, any member of the public would like to have pulled, members of the council?
I would like to pull the first item.
First item is renewal of contract with Patriot Disposal for Solid Waste Removal Services for the City Services for the city of Cottonwood. Okay, we'll take that item separately then. Mr. Bartosz, would you like to introduce that item?
Do we go ahead and pass the agenda?
Oh, you want to, okay, excuse me.
Yeah, and then discuss that.
We'll go ahead and take a motion then on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda with item number one being pulled.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then, did you catch that, Mr. McLean, who, okay, sorry, I'm doing a poor job at keeping track of who's making the motions here. All right, item one, renewal of contract with Patriot Disposal for Solid Waste Removal Services for the city of Cottonwood.
Okay, I just had one question. Do we have anybody here that's going to address that, or?
It doesn't look like anybody's here, but we can, we can try.
Who's on first?
Is there something?
If you would, sir, just, please introduce yourself, Mr. Rodriguez.
Rudy Rodriguez, I'm the head of services, general manager. If I can't answer it, I'll have Jeff Cook also.
Yeah, it's just a quick, easy question. I know, and it's been on the internet, it's been on Facebook, the Patriot disposal no longer has recycling service up. It's been down since November. They're not recycling, they're just, they're just dumping everything. I'm trying to find out, are they still not recycling? Is that, and is that what we contracted them, with them for, is that they were doing recycling as well?
I, I don't believe we're, I don't, I'm not sure if they're still, if they're up or not. Last time we went there, they were still functioning.
Jeff Cook, Contract Purchasing Administrator. This is for the waste removal, so not recycling. That was a little added bonus, and when they initially proposed, maybe we also recycle. But we do pay other companies in town for some recycling services, so at this point, this is just for solid waste.
Okay, okay, that's all I needed to know.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Allen, I'll check on that and see where they're at.
Thank you.
Because I talked to them shortly after the fire and they said they were going to try and just get back up, you know, and, and use what they still had available to try and make it work. And they're pretty dedicated to recycling, so my sense is, I mean, it's really, it's part of their business plan. Everything they can keep out of the landfill, it's, it's cheaper for them. So it's, it's their business model, so I'll check and let everybody know.
Cool, thank you.
Are we able to possibly table this renewal without service interruption until we find that out? If we, you know, consider that as part of the bid award in the contract in the first place?
I think that's what Jeff just explained, that it really wasn't, it was a perk.
It, but that's still something that I would consider in the evaluation of most advantageous if there is some kind of a perk there.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that we evaluated for recycling services as part of that agreement. It was for solid waste removal in the city, and that was kind of their own added note, which really wasn't taken into consideration in the evaluation, if that helps clarify.
Thank you.
So do they, so they don't provide any recycling services? This is just for haul and solid waste?
Yes.
That's what this contract is considering, okay.
That's what it says for solid waste removal. Do you want a motion?
Yeah, I do, I'm just, I'm just confused how recycling became part of this conversation, but.
And, well, my concern is I'm not sure if Patriot is using separate streams or if they're using a single stream.
They use a single stream.
They use a single stream, they don't dig it out of that.
And then that, I mean, I don't, I'm not that up on their solid waste versus their recycling, but if it's one truck, I would think that that would impact our contract, that, you know, that perk of the recycling and that single stream.
Yeah, I believe this was brought up at the time we had the solicitation, and we clarified that it was, we were looking for waste removal, just trash services basically, not any type of recycling.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we'd be happy to go ahead and table this and, and check into both of those.
That's fine with me, as long as there's no interruption in services.
I seem to recall that it was for recycling services too, as well. You don't think so?
No, sir. The reason, yeah, we, just, I'll, I'll just get along, because this was, this was strictly, we've talked about recycling, but we never combined a contract of recycling or, or trash services. This was basically just strictly trash disposal. The single stream that Patriot has had in the past was, as our city manager mentioned, that's kind of like a perk that they have because it, it behooves them to not put some of the trash in. But when we took the bid out, we didn't go to the contractors and say this includes recycling. It was just strictly to pick up and take away of our solid waste.
Well, maybe if there's, if there's no rush then, maybe let's just table this, we'll bring it back in two weeks and just have some more information in the packet for council to, to review then.
And I'd like to look too, because if we're able to secure a more advantageous bid with a provider that can offer both of this, you know, a combined bid, that might be something we can consider now at this renewal, you know, at this juncture.
So you're asking us to go ahead and rebid the whole thing?
No, not at all. But I would like to see what exactly was bid and then where are we at with our other contracts. If we're able to secure a more advantageous bid by rebidding recycling and solid waste, this might be a good opportunity. I don't have enough information tonight to ask you to rebid. That's not at all what I'm asking.
Okay, I'll, I'll be totally honest with you, as most of the waste haulers, they can probably do some sort of cycling, but they, they do it totally separate. I think Waste Man, Waste Man, Patriot Waste is the only one who actually has this slip, single string method. We can do it, but I think we probably need some parameters on, on what it is exactly that you want, because we bid it one way, now you're asking us to look at, at, at recycling. You want us to bring all the bidders back to the table on this?
I, I think what, they're just asking some questions, they're not asking for us to rebid it at this point.
Okay.
Just to see the contract.
So let's just get the information and we'll bring this back.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so I move to table consent agenda, item one.
Second.
So the mayor made the motion and Councilmember Allen seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, we'll table that then. All right, moving on is into new business. Item one, approval of a contract with Reese &amp; Sons Tire, Inc. for vehicle maintenance and repair services for the city of Cottonwood. Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, council, Jeff Cook, Contract and Purchasing Administrator. What we have before you this evening is an agreement for city fleet vehicle maintenance and repair services. I'm representing various city departments tonight, asking for approval of the contract with Reese &amp; Sons. The agreement, the, the previous agreement has expired as of March 1st. We're operating and continuing service under the same terms as that until this has been awarded. We published the solicitation in the newspaper in consecutive weeks, public purchase, the city website. I went out and reached out to all of the local shops in town that I knew of in addition. We did a pre-bid meeting, and we only received three responses back. As I mentioned, the evaluation committee consisted of staff members who utilize these services more than I in the city, Public Works, Utilities, PD, trying to think here, four or five various departments in the city. And Reese &amp; Sons received the highest cumul- cumulative score from committee members and was also unanimously chosen as the most advantageous proposer by all scores. And so by ordering this contract, we establish a new contract for a three-year term of two one-year renewal options, which will give us a fully executed agreement for these services that has just expired.
Okay, so essentially it could, could be a contract totaling five years?
Right.
And how many years has Reese &amp; Sons been performing?
Five, five years.
For five years now?
Yeah.
Any, any questions from council on this? I'm curious, at your pre-bid meeting, how many did you have show up for the pre-bid meeting?
We had one vendor show up to the pre-bid meeting, Reese &amp; Sons Tire.
Okay.
And so I, I reached out multiple times to each of the shops, because that's alarming to me. You know, I try to drum up as much competition as we can, several emails documented to the vendors, phone calls, and it was just all of the interest that we could get for this one.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, councilmember?
Just for information, we have a new business in town, she's sitting right back there, she was one of the bidders. You're 360, right?
Yes.
I just thought everybody ought to know that she's a new, a new citizen in town and she has her own garage, and she was one of the bidders. But I just thought, since she's sitting here, we should acknowledge her.
Thank you. And, and you did fill out a form, ma'am, to speak, so would you like to come up now and speak? Introduce yourself to council and let us hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alinka Rodd, I own 360 Automotive here in Cottonwood. June will officially be one year in business. Going to start off telling you a little bit about me. I've been fixing cars over 10 years. I'm a member of ASA, IATN, S Patty Advisory Panel, Megas High School Automotive Advisory Board, YCSO's K-9 Search and Rescue Unit, member of the Chamber of Commerce, Local First Arizona, and the National Association of Women Business Owners. I'm also an ASE certified master tech in addition to having the L1 certification. So tonight I want to address some inequities in how the criteria were administered in the request for proposal evaluation. First one was location. My understanding was the shop closest to 816 South Main Street would receive the greatest points in this area. To get to the Reese's or Big O, you would have to drive past my shop, so I'm not understanding how the scores are the same on that one. Any of the site references and the site visit evaluations? None of the references were contacted and there was no site visit to my shop. I do want to thank Mr. Cook for his honesty. He could have said that somebody drove by and it wasn't there, or they tried to call references and nobody answered the phone, but he was honest about them not doing that, and that I do appreciate. When I questioned the scoring via email, the response I got back, I did give everybody a copy of the email. I think you guys got that. I'm just going to read the key points on it. I reviewed the individual score sheets and three of our five evaluators did not score the site visit section. The other two were familiar with all of the reasons for this item. The main factor was the ability to secure vehicles in a locked area and the size of that area. References were taken at face value, although none of them were contacted, the staff felt they had enough information by looking at which companies were listed. It was awarded 49 points on references even though nobody was contacted, and Reese's got 70 points based on staff assumptions, which were not part of the evaluation as it was written in the request for proposal. Kind of looks like those making the decisions didn't feel they needed to fulfill their obligation in the evaluation process and do their due diligence. It was awarded 21 points on the site visit that never occurred, while my competitor was awarded 26 points. As I stated, I've been in business less than a year, so I don't know how they could have made that decision without coming by the shop. Part of that was the ability to secure vehicles. Had they come by to visit, they would have seen that in addition to storing vehicles in the shop, they have access to a locked gated area, and they also have video surveillance that's wifi accessible. So realistically, the competitor was awarded this contract based on criteria that were never evaluated in a process that's quite specific. I do acknowledge that there may be mitigating factors such as an ability of a single shop to repair everything. Theoretically, yeah, it can fix anything that comes in the door, but that approach isn't going to be beneficial to anybody involved as the end result is not going to be efficient or cost effective. Certain situations may call for a subcontractor that is more familiar or better equipped for the required. It could have easily misled the evaluation committee, but that's not the type of shop I wish to have. I prefer to run a shop based on honesty and fairness, which is all I expect from the committee throughout the bidding process. I also found it interesting that except for the shop that was previously awarded the contract, not a single one of those shops participated last time, put in a bid this time. Before submitting a bid, I spoke to a few of them who had bid before and was advised by all of them not to waste my time filling out the paperwork as it was going to go back to Reese's anyway. Based on this experience, I understand now where these other business owners were coming from, as it's very clear the decision was made without even going through the motions outlined in the RPF. All three business owners submitted bids and went through the effort of putting it together. The least they could do was evaluate the bids completely and fairly. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Cook. Can you, can you answer a couple of questions for me?
Yes.
The, no one from the committee called any of the references that were listed on the?
That's correct. And I, I did write this email, anything that I put in writing, I am aware, you know, of that we work for a public entity. So at the time that I wrote that, I felt that in the business of doing this, we call references and most all of them give glowing remarks all the time, which can result in a very similar score for all of the participants. So in this case, I looked at the references and we looked at the size of the shops, as I had mentioned, the vehicles, the types of vehicles, and the length in the contracts.
And then the site visit, no one, did, did they, did anyone from the committee or the committee as a whole make site visits?
I contacted, after having this email and asked, because I, when I received the scores, we had zeros in those sections, which is kind of rare for all proposers from three of our committee members. And they informed me they didn't have time to make it and do those site visits and asked if it was all right, had they done zeros for everyone, making it fair in that regard. And I, at the time, responded, yeah. The other two claimed that they were familiar with the locations, they visited them, they did see the locked perimeter at Ms. Barrett's shop. They had questions on whether it could house the number of vehicles we needed. They felt that they were pretty clean and she ran a really nice shop.
I guess, I mean, I, I'm not, I am concerned that, I mean, that when I read through the professional services agreement, I, I thought it was very thorough and exhaustive, and I, I would hope that we'd follow through with, with everything in here. I'd be, I'm surprised that no one would call the references or visit the, the shops from the committee. I don't know if the rest of the council feels about that, but if, if we say we're going to do it, then I would think we'd follow through with it.
I, I agree with that. I understand the reason why not doing that, calling the references, because it does get repetitive. Everybody, you're not going to refer somebody that's going to give you a bad review. I understand that, but if that's part of the grading criteria, it really should be followed up on. I did a, I did a quick bit of math here, and even taking out references and site visit, Reese still comes out top with 232, 360 is 194, and Big O is 130. I, I would, no matter how this comes out, encourage you to do, whether or not we table this and we go further or we award it to Reese &amp; Sons, don't let that discourage you. You're new in town, I remember seeing you at the first Chamber Mixer. Don't, don't let that discourage you, continue. That's how people get in here. Reese hasn't been the top dog all the time, they've been kicked off the pedestal quite a few times, and somebody else has gotten in there and serviced the city for a while. So, so please keep us in mind, okay? I just want, want you to know, we need more people with your skills, in particular, a woman business owner just thrills me to no end with your skills. I just am very pleased to see that.
I'd like to echo what Councilmember Allen said. I'm, I'm happy that we have a contracts manager in place and encourage you in the future. I also appreciate the staff who serve on the selection committee as well. It does take, you know, considerable time. My concern echoing Mary Linsky, though, is if we have these criteria, I understand the numbers and the scoring in this particular instance, but in order to, in my opinion, to have a meaningful procurement process, if we say these are the items that will be considered and there are only six, to not then meaningfully consider two of those six, basically a third, is problematic to me. Also, as far as location, and I didn't have, you know, time in advance of tonight's meeting to dig into procurement laws, but following, so long as we follow procurement laws, I would really like to see as part of the most advantageous criteria, keeping any sales tax dollars in Cottonwood without obviously discriminating and walking that fine line, which I don't believe from reviewing the packet. which I don't believe from reviewing the packet, we gave any consideration as far as location and sales tax dollars in our community. And correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe that I've seen that in solicitations before, in the bigger cities, so we can definitely look at that.
An advantage, you mean, for local, for businesses within the municipal limits?
Yeah, and it seems, the ones that I've seen seem to fall more on the lines of an IFB, where it's a low bid situation, or a request for quotes, where it's hard dollar values, and I think somehow they factor the tax.
Did you say IF, IFB?
IFB, invitation for bids, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks, IFB, okay, thank you.
And can I just add one more thing? I understand that that may have not been, maybe I have too literal of a mind sometimes, because I did take Ms. Corrode's information and took it to heart and read through it, also seeing the numbers add up, had those, had it gone a different way in those two criteria, and looked at the cost and the approach, which were weighted at fifty-five percent on this, I won't do that in the future. I can see that that has caused problems in this instance, but I guess I took it pretty literally when I looked at the numbers there, as you've stated, and there was no way to make those back up in those other criteria. The, I'd like to inform Ms. Corrode, the staff was very pleased with your proposal, as well, I'm very impressed, they thought that you could do a very well-written proposal.
How does the rest of the council feel about this item?
I, you know, I did some math, too, and actually gave the points, instead of the way Councilmember Ellen did it, just taking the few categories, and still, Reese was at three ninety-five, and three sixty was at three fifty-six, so I think, you know, cost and approach, especially with the higher weight, you know, has to be taken into account. I'm fine moving forward.
Okay. What is approach, what does that mean?
Their approach to the proposal, it's probably, I think I have it more well-defined in here. As it was listed in the proposal, description of approach to the city's need for a turnkey fleet vehicle maintenance solution, turnaround time will be considered in this criteria, and see the specifications and scope and work, which are listed in the agreement.
Under the cost criteria, did you factor in, you know, for example, the one business outside of city limits not having the sales tax, you know, in their...
We did not, that was not part of this solicitation. I believe the hourly rate provided by Reese and Sons was sixty-five dollars an hour for labor, and you can correct me if I'm...
Was eighty-five or ninety-five?
Eighty-five or ninety-five dollars per hour for Ms. Corrode.
That can be pretty significant with the number of vehicles we have, that twenty...
Sure, but we don't then evaluate the amount of time that we're taking, so, you know, I'm an attorney, and I think, you know, hourly billers will agree, you can hire an attorney who is five hundred dollars an hour, who will take one hour to perform a task versus an attorney who may be a bargain rate attorney at one hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour, who will then take six, you know, a significant amount of time, so I don't, I understand completely. My biggest concern, again, is if the procurement process is fairly and uniformly followed, and somebody is the winner, and somebody's the loser, that's fair, but here, where, and especially in light of the public perception, if it's true that people should not waste their time, quote unquote, going through the bid process with the city, that's very concerning to me, and where we do have a third of the criteria that weren't meaningfully considered, you know, I still have concerns about this, this award.
And I would agree, I think it may not change the numbers, had they followed through with the site visit and calling the references, but again, if we're going to say that that's part of the evaluation process, then we really should follow through with that.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, one of your options also is, is to refuse to accept all the bids, throw the process out, and we can start again, if that's your pleasure.
That would be my preference, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about this.
I don't think we have very many options, we either go with what we have here, or we go out for proposals again.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's part of your discussion, in light of what I've heard, and I'm filtering it, does the council want to have more of a role than it had in this particular process in developing the criteria and scoring mechanisms? Because those are, by their very nature, subject, we've talked about this before, they're subjective, and staff does as good a job as it can applying them evenly and faithfully, but it's always the council's prerogative to decide.
I, yeah, I think staff is the one best equipped to make these decisions, particularly those departments that heavily use the services of a mechanic, I just feel like if we're going to have a procurement process, we should follow through with that.
I agree, Jeff Cook is very capable, absolutely capable, never had an issue, we just, we just want all the criteria met, and spelled out there.
And thank you, city attorney, and I hope my comment about my desire to keep our sales tax dollars in city limits is not seen as wanting to meddle in the actual criteria, I completely think that staff, especially those selected on the committee who use the services and are able to provide feedback, are the more appropriate persons to be serving on that.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Henry, that's council's prerogative, and that's something council has expressed on other occasions in the past, before you came on council, and I think staff hears you.
Councilmember Alt House?
So I have a question, I'm a bit confused now, so, I mean, if we're not changing the criteria of how staff is grading, then I wouldn't think we'd want to go back out for a proposal, maybe just to have the scoring redone on these three proposals to include all categories? Is that what we're asking, or...
Well, we can, council, it's really up to council how we want to handle this, so that's an option, I think going out and rebidding it is another option, and accepting...
Why would we, I'm sorry, why would we rebid it, though, if we're not changing the scoring criteria? Because, I mean, we didn't get a lot of participation, why would we take up that time to rebid it when we're allowing the staff to use their knowledge and their ability, and saying council doesn't want to get involved in how the scoring is done, so why would we rebid it? I mean, bidding takes a lot of time.
Certainly.
So, I'm just, why would we rebid it if we're not changing how we're gonna score? So it's, I think we either take it as is, or we ask that these three bids be rescored.
I don't know if we lawfully can do that, following procurement practices, I believe we have to actually start over through rejecting these, and that, you know, the more we discuss this, I'm leaning heavily toward that, I've submitted proposals for some of our clients on behalf of my firm, and I would put down very different references, you know, I try to put down the references that will answer their phones and say great things about me, which is what we'd expect, but I would put down different references, possibly more, you know, sexy businesses or people who may never answer their phone, which I think, if I knew that that was what was being evaluated, who, you know, for some other criteria, and not just the glowing reference, so I don't think we can downplay the value of the consideration these businesses put before listing these references.
And I think there's certainly a lot of information that the callers could glean from the references, you know, not just about glowing recommendation, but, you know, the type of vehicles that they have the mechanic maintain, and, you know, certainly a lot of other information that you could...
Certainly, and I didn't mean to sound like I was downplaying the references, in this particular case, the references went slightly above and beyond what we asked for, they listed years on the contract, and the type of service and fleet that they were maintaining in that instance.
My concern is if we, if you don't mind, if we, if we don't just reject all bids, but instead choose to have the committees rescore these three, then I think there would be businesses that would have some heartburn out there in the public and in our community, so I think if we're going to, I think we should just reject, my, you know, what I would propose is that we reject all bids, bid it again, and make sure that we follow through with the procurement process that everybody signed on to.
I have a question.
Sure.
What does this mean realistically, as far as, it sounds as though we've been operating under a state of grace right now, with the same contract rate as we expired March first, are we going to see either a lapse of service or an interim period where our rates are, you know, unreasonable?
We'll continue to operate under the same agreement that we've had, and the same rates.
Okay, good, good.
And not to throw a big wrinkle into the whole thing, but I also have had a longstanding concern about the duration of these contracts, that it's a potential for five years for one vendor, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I feel like, you know, it'd be nice to give more of our local businesses more of an opportunity to bid on these city projects, because as a local business owner, I understand what a contract like this can do for your business, and certainly I think it'd be nice to share the services essentially that City of Cottonwood has out there to offer to these local businesses, and I think if there is a way to look at an opportunity to, you know, weight differently those that do operate within the city limits, I think that'd be helpful, too.
I understand that sometimes the time, the reason for the time is often because you invest in the city, the city has specific equipment, so you need specific tools, and you have to invest in those tools, and if you're gonna have the account for one year, it's probably not monetarily advantageous for you to do that, but if you're gonna have it for two or three years, then investing in that equipment obviously will pay itself off through the contract, so I do understand that, that little bit lengthier contract.
Yeah, and this isn't necessarily a conversation we have to have now, but it's certainly on my radar, and I'd like the council to take a look at it at some point, the way we, the duration of these contracts that we seek. So, council.
Do we make a motion that we reject all bids and go out for a rebid?
I'll second that. All in favor? Oh, deputy clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
I'm gonna pass, which means you have to come back to me.
Councilmember Norman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Howagie?
Yes.
Mary Linsky?
Yes.
And Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, thank you for your time, appreciate it. Moving on, item two, special event liquor license applications submitted by Christian Oliver Del Rio, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for Chamber Mixers scheduled for March sixteenth, twenty seventeen, at eight ninety-one South Main Street, Randall's Restaurant, and April twentieth, twenty seventeen, at one ninety-seven South Willard Street, Haven of Cottonwood. Do...
I need to recuse myself.
Okay, very good.
Conflict, I just can't get my chair to move.
So, council, this is pretty self-explanatory. Is there any discussion about this item?
Not our first rodeo.
I'm sorry?
Not our first rodeo in this one.
Would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely, if I could get there from here, I'm gonna go ahead and wing it, I move to approve the special liquor license application submitted by Christian Oliver Del Rio for the Chamber Mixer scheduled for March sixteenth and April twentieth, twenty seventeen.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
And before the vote, I would just like to say that I am a current governing board member of the Chamber of Commerce, however, I don't see a conflict of interest, by my reading of the statute, and I did consult with our city attorney, Mr. Horton, who also agrees that there, this situation does not present a conflict of interest, but for appearance purposes, I did want the public to know that this analysis has been conducted.
Very good, thank you.
And I ditto that, because we burst over on the board.
Okay, well, I appreciate you disclosing that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's approved. All right, last item, appointing a citizen-at-large and council representative to the city's Board and Commission Application Review Committee. So, this is the committee that we talked about putting together, we have, the deadline was March one for people to apply for the many boards and commissions that we have vacancies on, and in order to go ahead and appoint, you know, review and appoint some of those people that applied, we have to, we have to start this committee, and we did receive, I believe, one application for the citizen-at-large, and then we need to appoint one council member to serve on this committee as well, so. I'll open it up for the council to discuss this.
I'm not, does anybody familiar with Joyce Oswald, has any personal relationship with...
I do not, I do not know her, but I do appreciate her signing up.
Absolutely.
She, I, I thought she would be here, so we could meet her, I just assumed we would meet somebody we were appointing to serve on a board.
Well, that would, that would be nice, but I don't believe she's here. And to be honest with you, I don't know if she was notified, so it's probably not by any fault of her own.
She might not have been notified.
Has a meeting, either day of the week or time, been set, or this was an as-needed committee, wasn't that...
It was an as-needed committee, and really, they don't ever need to meet as a group, they would be, they would receive the applications by email electronically, and then they would just score based off that matrix that we came up with, and then that would be tallied with the council's matrix that we fill out during our public interview of those applicants, so they don't actually need to meet in person, which makes it much more mysterious, they'll never know one another.
They don't show up here and know, they don't.
Do we have any, any applicants pending this review process? For other boards and commissions?
Yeah, we have received applicants, I believe, for all of the commissions, and I don't know that we have a surplus of applicants for the amount of seats available, but, yeah, we have.
Because this would only be used if we had a surplus, is what we had discussed before.
Yeah, I think, I think this committee would actually make sure that they are eligible to be appointed, but essentially, you're right, it would be kind of moot if there's two vacancies and one applicant.
Right, I would, I mean, I'm fine moving forward, I would like to meet Ms. Oswald at some point, if she could maybe come to the next working session or the next city council meeting, it would be nice to put a face, you know, with somebody who's scoring and helping, that's just me personally, I like to, you know, meet people and...
No, I agree with you, and I, I don't know what happened there, but she's not here tonight.
I mean, she was the only person that applied as a citizen?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well then I'll move to appoint Joyce Oswald to serve as the citizen-at-large representative to the Board and Commission Application Review Committee.
Second.
Okay, so mayor made the motion, vice mayor, or excuse me, councilmember Pfeiffer seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, and now we need to appoint a council to serve on this Board and Commission Application Review Committee, and as we discussed, that council member would then recuse him or herself during the public interview of the applicants. So who...
Everybody jump up at the same time.
I want to, I would like to be part of the public interview process, so...
Okay.
I'm trying to remember, because it was also the public interview process and then the vote, and I'm hesitant to give up my vote.
I think, I think that's what our issue is right now, is we're all hesitant to give up our vote. However, you do have a piece of vote, because you're scoring the matrices, so that's basically your vote, but I think we're all hesitant.
If I could remind the council, it was supposed to be a rotating slot.
Thank you for that reminder.
I don't remember that. Are we supposed to call references?
Was that supposed to be decided tonight, is it on the agenda?
Okay.
Okay.
And it'll revolve, so next year we'll come back around, and you know, council, we're trying this process out, this may not work, and we might try to look at a different process in the future, we're trying to breathe light... We're trying to breathe life into these, you know, trying to get folks to sign up and, you know.
Can I make a motion before she changes her mind?
Please.
I make a motion that we appoint Councilmember Norman as a council representative on this commission.
Second.
Okay, so.
You're surrounded.
Councilmember Pfeiffer made the motion and Councilmember Alt House seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
I move we pay the claims and adjustments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I move we adjourn.
Aye.
Second.
Okay, so that was.
Getting a little giggly over here, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was Norman and Pfeiffer seconded, okay, you got that, thank you. Thanks, council.